All right, so this is the June 8th. Montana zoning commission meeting 5:30 PM. And we have Michael Chellis and Wendy Weaver present as well as Matthew Menard. That's everybody, isn't it?
No, Dave.
Sean's gone. Okay, well, thank you, everybody for showing up on this beautiful evening. And let's just get started here. So we don't, doesn't look like we got anybody from the public here yet. So we'll just proceed. Are there any proposed additions to the agenda that any of you have? I think the only thing, Michael, was to look over the previous minutes and get those approved. So we'll put that in there. And I would also like to at least discuss the process for replacement for Sean. And what we should do with that. All right, so we have a couple of meetings worth of minutes to approve. I sent those around earlier to the commission members. And it looks like March 9th and May 11th are the two meetings that we have not looked over reviewed and reviewed. So I guess I'm wondering whether you've had a chance to look those over. And have spotted any kind of errors or omissions or corrections to be made to them. Anybody? Well.
I didn't have any changes or corrections.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Matthew, I don't know if you've looked them over. I didn't send them around to you again. No, okay, well, then, I think, just to expedite this. We got, as I said, two, two sets of minutes to go through and approve. March 9th and May 11th. Can I get a motion from the floor? Maybe we can just have one motion that includes both of those and just and just approve them. Now, I have a motion from the floor.
A motion to approve March and May's minutes as they are.
All right, a second.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Michael. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving those two minutes? Say aye.
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 Aye. We're missing one. All those opposed? Okay, for the rec, I think for the record, we're supposed to designate everybody who votes up or down. Did somebody not vote on that? Wendy, did you vote?
I did. I didn't hear Michael, though.
Michael DeJealous, did you vote?
I will say aye. I did vote, but it may have been drowned out.
Okay, I didn't hear you, so thank you very much. All right, so those two minutes have been approved and entered into the record. Thank you very much. All right, so next is old business. I don't know, is this appropriate time to discuss a replacement for Sean? We did discuss it last month a bit. Maybe, Matthew, can you talk about that process?
Yep, so the city has listed Sean's position. It's been advertised. I think we have had one applicant at this point. I think it closes June 14th. Don't quote me on that, but it's sometime in June. Once it closes, we will provide you with all the applications. And you, under the city's sports handbook, basically, you would provide a recommendation to the city commission on who you would like to replace Sean at the next meeting. And then staff will provide that recommendation. And potentially our recommendation that we're generally just going to take your recommendation to the city commission. And once the city commission approves that recommendation, we'll have a new member. So I expect that to be probably the August meeting would be my guess for the timeframe on that.
The approval, so if the closing of applications is June 14th, then, or July meeting, we could review the applications, vote on it, and then in August, the city would deal with it. Okay, that's good. So I would just say, we've got a week or so here. If anybody knows anybody that would be good, that, you know, somebody that we could work well with, that's interested and has some time to devote to this and works well in a collaborative sort of way. Please encourage them to, to apply. It'd be, it's always great to have you have two or three or four people to look through and compare and, you know, choose the best.
I've, Matt, I know two people who've applied, so hopefully their application, they said their applications were in. What's the process like of deciding on people? Do we do that, like, in front of them? Is it awkward? Is it, I mean, do we have to do it awkwardly? Does it have to be weird? I just, yeah, I remember our conservation board was a little interesting, so I'm just curious what that's like.
Yes, it has to be done in a public meeting. I don't know, you can make it awkward if you want, but in the end, you are going to have to make a recommendation one person over another. It's less awkward when you don't have a returning member, I will say that. So you will have to make a recommendation. Keep in mind that your decision isn't the final decision, so hopefully that sort of tempers your awkwardness a little bit. But it's a public meeting, it has to happen in public. Obviously, the applicants are welcome to be there, so you will need to do it in front of them. That's kind of the way the recommendation goes.
The way the process has worked in the past, when I was on the joint planning and zoning commission, is that we would look over the applications beforehand, and then we would invite those people to come in for an interview. We would have a set of questions to ask everybody, the same questions. Have a discussion and then, you know, kind of open it up a bit with that particular person to, you know, have, you know, whatever topics come up that are of interest. I do think it's prob, I think it would be probably okay as once we've done the interviews, we can ask those people to leave. And then, and then we can have a discussion amongst ourselves, while it would still be public, but about who we would want to choose. Am I wrong about that, Matthew? You're shaking your head.
Yeah, they, because they're members of the public and it's a public meeting, they are now under no obligation. So we've, you could tell them it might be awkward if they stay. I think if I were applying, I would want to know what the decision was, so I would want to be at that meeting. I don't think anyone's going to get too aggravated. You know, if someone else gets chosen, we've had such good applicants for all of our boards and commissions. It's sort of, people are aware that, you know, it's competitive, which is actually, it's a good thing for us. So it's sort of, it is what it is at this point.
It, it, it's a good exercise for us in diplomatic speaking. So it's always great to discuss people in the most positive of terms. So to be able to do that, and at the same time, you know, indicate that you prefer one person or one person has specific qualities that would be useful. I mean, that's, that's just the game, I think. Wendy, I keep interrupting.
And, yeah, and, like, been through the hiring process many times and getting right personalities. Like, there should be a way to have, like, an internal dialogue about things about a given candidate, but whatever. I didn't even know that we were, or that you, the advertisement had posted. So is that, can you send that to me so I could see it and send out to some people that I think might be good as well?
Yeah, thank you, Wendy. Matthew, maybe send it to all of us. All right, great, thank you very much. All right, now, on to new business. On the agenda, the first item to discuss is the 1, 1,014 and 1,016 West Park Zone Map Amendment. We've been through a couple of these recently, so I think we know the process. This is the Radio Shack Building, basically, and maybe the adjoining building that's a insurance agent building, those two buildings. So anyhow, I'm going to turn this over to Matthew, who can give an abbreviated staff report.
Yeah, this is going to be very quick. These are two railroad parcels, as Jim noted, it's the Radio Shack Building. There's several other commercial uses in there. There's a dojo now, there used to be a video store. There's an internet service provider and then the neighboring insurance company building. I think there was own industrial because the railroad parcels, they've been commercial since at least the 70s. It's a really simple zoning update to just make sure that in the future, these businesses are allowed to continue, and we don't have headaches where they have to go through the special exception process in the zoning for uses for a parcel that's been used commercially for 40 years now. In terms of the criteria under state statute, this really doesn't change anything because we're zoning it from industrial to highway commercial. It's actually an improvement in health, safety, welfare, because you can't do heavy industry there, right across the street from a neighborhood. It's commercial uses. Highway commercial is what's along Park, basically, the whole way, as you all know. So it's really not spot zoning, it's similar to all the other uses along Park. So I do think it meets the criteria for state statute, and I don't think it's spot zoning. And that is my very abbreviated staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Jim, you're muted.
Matthew, I assume you've gone through the process of notifying your neighbor, neighboring property owners.
Yep, so we notified everyone within 300 feet, as is required. I haven't heard anything back. I did specifically reach out to the railroad. I think I provided you that letter, which basically said, yeah, this is fine with us as long as we reserve the right to continue to operate a railroad in the future on that parcel. We can't take that right away from them, especially through zoning. So they, they remain with that, right? So they didn't have any problem with it.
Okay, any further discussion?
Jim, you're muted again.
Sorry. Hearing no further discussion. Can we have a motion from the floor to approve the voting, the zoning change that has been recommended by the staff?
I'll make a motion to change zoning of 1014, 1016 West Park Street to Highway Commercial.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Wendy. Any further questions or discussion? Well, then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did we hear Wendy? We did, I said aye too. I think it's unanimous, so good. Thank you very much, that's taken care of. All right, next on the agenda are the fees and permitting changes to the zoning ordinance, the zone text amendment. And this is a little more complicated, but let's have Matthew give us a introduction.
Yeah, so basically, we have started, and this is most of the process of updating the planning department's fee schedule. Right now, our fees are not even close to covering our costs. And the plan for the future is to split the planning and building departments. Right now, almost all of the fees taken in by the combined departments are building permits. So they're basically covering most of the cost. When we do that, we need to set up new permitting processes. Basically, planning department will be in charge of enforcing the zoning. Building department will be in force, in charge of enforcing the building code. So we do need to set fees for that as well. Currently, the fees for zoning applications are in the zoning ordinance. The basic premise of this zoning update is to remove the fees from the zoning ordinance and allow them to be set by the city commission for resolution, which makes them more flexible, which allows us to make sure that our fees are matching our costs, as there's been quite a bit of interest from the public and from the city commission to have developers pay their own way, essentially. I don't think any of the costs proposed are exorbitant, and generally, they're generally lower than places like Bozeman or Park County. So they've been estimated on amount of time it takes and our potential cost for the next fiscal year, which is just under $100 an hour. So that's how potential fees have been proposed. The city commission will have to approve those fees if this ordinance were to pass. But generally, it's, it's a pretty simple ordinance of just deleting the existing fees from the zoning, stating that the fees will be set by resolution. And there's a few minor administrative updates to make sure that the right departments are performing the right administrative actions under the zoning ordinance and that all of the permits that we run or will be running are covered under the zoning ordinance. So that either the planning or building department has the authority to do that. The only other small administrative updates have to do with compliance, which has also been split off for a few years now into, basically, into the police department. So these updates are all administrative in nature. They don't really affect anything in the zoning other than allowing us to set fees by, by resolution and making sure that the authority is in the right place for the right department to administer the right type of permits. So obviously, it doesn't really interact well with the state criteria for zoning, but it does meet all of those. Have charging the right amount of fees, having the right amount of staffing, obviously allows us to enforce the zoning better and in a more timely manner. It shouldn't impact any specific property owners, so obviously, it's not spot zoning, and it doesn't really change any of the requirements in the zone either. So that's really all I have, unless you have questions for me.
All right, I'd like to open this up to discussion from the zoning commission. Are there any issues here that are confusing in nature? Or do you have any specific questions about the language that is proposed in the ordinance? Anyone? Have you had a chance to look through the ordinance?
I have. I know you said they're comparable to Bozeman. How, how did the rates? Can you give a little more detail on how you came up with them?
So they're definitely not comparable to Bozeman. They're definitely significantly lower than Bozeman's fees. They were, basically, what I did to come up with the fees is took our proposed budget for the next fiscal year, divided that by the number of working hours in a year, which came out to be just under $100 an hour. So basically, total planning department's cost to run per hour is just under $100 an hour. And then I multiplied that by the estimated time it would take to run these permits. So basically, if you multiply or divide the proposed permitting cost by 100, that's the estimated hours that I think that the permits will take. A lot of these permits are new, so it's going to be an estimation, and they may have to be changed in the future. But I think they're pretty much in the ballpark, and they're still quite reasonable compared to other places that are significantly lower than Bozeman's fees.
So these would be, Matthew, would these be updated annually? Or, I mean, I, or how would they rate increases happen?
So the, any fee change would be via resolution by the city commission. It could either be the city commission asking us to reevaluate our fees or the planning department, finding that the fees aren't covering either our time or our costs. They could be updated every time or at any time. I'll probably evaluate them every year or two or so to make sure that they're sort of, they're working out in the way they're expected to, and they're not way off. Obviously, we don't want to undercharge significantly, and we certainly, certainly don't want to overcharge significantly. So they will be evaluated to make sure we're not doing either of those things.
Thanks, Wendy. Any other questions or discussion? Right, I have a few questions, if I may. Just, well, just to let people kind of know about the costs, proposed costs here. I looked at the existing costs for various services and the proposed cost that Matthew has provided. So it's on the back of the zoning ordinance that Matthew sent to us. So a change in zoning went, is going to go from $575 up to $750 plus $7 per letter that they send out to any property owners within 300 feet. So it could be five property owners, it could be 50 property owners. It's just depends on the location, I guess. So that is up quite high. Variances are going from $35 up to $500 plus the $7 mailing fee. And then special exemptions are going from 250 up to 500. So it's sort of looking like we're looking at a, I'm not sure, a doubling or a tripling of the permitting costs or fees that will be charged. So my question to you, Matthew, is if, if up till this point, the whole department has been funded by building permits, and now the zoning applications will get their own revenue stream, will there be surplus money coming in from billing permits? And/or will those numbers, those permit costs go down? Or how do you see, you know, the two departments finances kind of balancing out in the future?
So right now, it's, the departments are covered by permit fees and general fund money. I don't think there's going to be excess building permit fee money, though we are seeing an increase in building permits year over year. I don't expect those costs to go down. Because we are seeing more and more permits, I would expect staffing to go up rather than a cost to go down to make sure that we can continue to meet the requirements of state statute.
But the building permit should carry their own services for plan review and for inspections, right? So that number should float, sort of parallel to the number of building permits that are being issued.
Potentially, you know, there's, there's efficiencies that you lose once you hit a certain point where you need a second staff, but you're not, that same staff isn't running the same number of permits. So I don't think it'll float, it won't float that much. It'll be up to the building department to decide how they want to set fees. Their fees are already on a sliding scale based on the cost of the project. So I don't expect those to change too significantly anytime in the near future. They've been updated more recently. The zoning fees, as you can see by the fact that the variance costs $30, which doesn't even cover the mailers currently for zoning applications, they haven't been updated in a very long time.
Do you know if the the level of building inspections is adequate at, at the current time? Do, do they, do you have staffing there to, to get out to all these construction projects that, you know, when they need, those inspections need to happen? Is it, is that adequate at the current time?
Yes. It's very busy, but currently, we are doing all the inspections we need to do, and we can generally do them within a day or two. State statute gives us a very, very limited time. I think it's 10 working days to turn a building permit around. And so that has to happen. So if we're going to, if we start getting close to that number, then the building department needs to start looking at if they need more staffing or not.
Okay. All right, did I have any questions? Well, I have one question. Just a sort of an administrative thing. I've got article seven. It lists zoning commission and board of adjustment. My understanding is the board of adjustment has been dissolved and that the city commission is taking over those responsibilities. I'm just wondering if that needs to be stricken from.
I thought I got all those. Where is that, where is that specifically?
It's, it's right after section 30.65, non-conforming structures, or 30.66, actually, just below that article. It's article seven. It's, it's just a headline, a header. Anyhow, I spotted that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be a good, potentially, just a good recommend, or in your motion, just to have that removed from that title. I think that's good, that's a great point.
And then can you talk a little bit about? I'm not really clear in my mind. The distinction between, well, section 30.73, it says hearings, appeals, and notices. And then paragraph A, you've got appeals, and you've stricken out hearings, appeals, and notices. So I'm just wondering about how this is structured and what and is there another place where hearings and notices are included? Is there a reason for why that was stricken out?
Yes, the reason was, is because that, that A point didn't talk about hearings or notices. I believe the section does talk about the hearing, which is why the title is. And I don't know if there's any notice, there is a notice actually in that section. So potentially, notices should be added back into point A. And then there is hearing, there's discussion about hearings below in that section as well, but that's under point C.
Right, and so hearings and notices has mostly to do with if we or the city commission has made a ruling and the property owner disagrees with that, there's a process for an additional hearing to review the matter and take a second vote on that.
Yes, because you all don't make any final decisions. The appeal would be directly from the city commission. There's not really a way to appeal your decisions unless it's a final decision. They could also appeal the planning department's decision to the city commission as well.
Okay, and then so those kinds of hearings are distinct from somebody asking for a variance. That's correct.
So basically, if somewhere, someone were to come in for a variance and get denied, they could appeal that. Because we don't have a board of adjustment, it's a bit of a strange appeals process to appeal it back to the city commission. They could appeal that, but then essentially, it ends up in court. It's the end of, generally, it would be the end of the appeal unless the commission were to overturn their own decision.
Um. Also, I noticed section 30.75 includes the board of adjustments in there. Section A says no special exceptions shall be granted by the city commission unless the board of adjustment finds. You might want to clarify that. And then finally, my last set of questions here. In section 30.80 and 30.81, these are the duties of the building officials, first of all. And it says that they review the issue permits for construction, and they conduct inspections. The issue permits, I was just kind of wondering whether you needed the task of reviewing plans for compliance as a separate line item in that or not? Or whether issuing the permit would include that part of the process? So that's just something for you to think about, whether Whether you want to be a little bit more specific about. The process, because the various builders and homeowners and whatnot will look through this. They want to know what the process is and if it's a little bit more laid out, it might be, might be helpful. And the same thing with section thirty point eight one zoning coordinator. Nowhere in there does it say to review, review plans. It just says to issue, issue permits. Well, it says also to enforce the zoning ordinance, so whether, whether you want to change that language or not. I'll leave to your discretion. So I think that's everything that I really noticed in here that I was a little bit confused about. Anyone else have anything? They want to discuss?
No, I think it's great. I'm glad to see. Us getting some type of fee structure that. Begins to have developers pay their way instead of the cities subsidizing that aspect of. Permitting, I, I just know, like revisiting and increasing the rates. Often opens up, you know, a lot of room for, I don't know. Discussion and so just making sure getting them. At a really good solid, even if they seem a little higher rate now, might make it easier to adjust in the future, but.
Okay, all right, thanks Wendy. All right, any further discussion? If not, can I have a motion from the floor to accept? The changes to. The zoning ordinance having to do with. Text changes for. For my text changes for fees and permitting. With the only. Changes being the removal of the. Of the board of adjustments from the tax. Can I have a motion from the floor for that?
Jimmy, you may have to make the motion.
We're not getting anything.
I'm just confused on the wording.
And I'm trying to take notes. Sorry.
On the wording to use in the motion?
Right.
Well, it could be. A motion to approve staff proposed changes. To the zoning ordinance having to do with. With. Fees and permitting. And include the removal of the words board of adjustment in two places in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, what you said.
All right, all right.
That's why I don't speak up. Oh my god, yeah.
All right. Well, was that clear enough? If so, can we have a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, okay. All right, any further discussion?
I guess, I guess we're, we are, we are approving the ability of the commission to change fees by resolution. Is that correct? Is that the essence of what we're doing here?
Essentially, you are removing the fees from the ordinance so they can be set by resolution rather than a zoning ordinance change.
Okay, so that's really what we're trying to do here. Okay. Very good. I agree with that, right?
And to the extent that that's a political issue, it's been going to be laid in the lap of the city commission. Right, okay, okay, any, any further discussion? Well, I'll call for question then. All those in favor of the proposed. Changes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and all those opposed? No one, so that passed unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, and then next on the agenda is the tiny home zone text amendment. Matthew, can you lead us in the discussion?
I can. So this one is a little bit more complicated. Basically, the impetus for this amendment is the public, essentially. People continue to call into the planning department. And ask if they can put a, a tiny home, basically structured under four hundred square feet on their property. I think it is because there is now a local manufacturer, though I don't know who that is, because I couldn't find anything. Anywhere on them that is basically manufactured offsite.
Lotus Homes have a Facebook page.
Okay. So. The way the current zoning is written, anything manufactured offsite is considered a manufactured home or a mobile home. Which doesn't work for tiny homes, because the current zoning has a minimum size of a manufactured home of a thousand square feet. This is an old HUD standard. It was consistent with the HUD standards when the zoning. Adopted that number. The HUD standards have subsequently changed. And the international building code has subsequently added an appendix specifically for tiny homes. So this zoning update basically. Is to update the zoning to be consistent with both of those things and to allow tiny homes that are manufactured offsites, offsite to be used as ADUs. Currently, you can build a tiny home if it's stick-built onsite and use that as an ADU or a primary. Basically, there's no minimum size for stick-built homes. But basically, the IBC defines a tiny home as any structure under four hundred square feet and has. Very slightly different building code rules for those structures. HUD has also changed their definition of manufactured home to be any structure over three hundred and twenty square feet. So currently, our definition of manufactured home isn't consistent with the HUD definition of manufactured home. So. This proposed zoning is to have a definition of tiny homes, that being a structure built offsite under four hundred square feet. Update the definition of manufactured homes to be consistent with the current HUD definition. Basically, only updating the sizing so that it's anything over three hundred and twenty square feet rather than a thousand. And then setting standards for tiny homes, basically allowing them in any district where an ADU is allowed. And only allowing those as to be utilized as ADUs. The one exception to that is there was a provision in the zoning to allow. Housing, affordable housing providers, either government entities or nonprofits, to build manufactured homes under that thousand square feet. That set of provisions has been moved down to the tiny home provisions to allow nonprofit or government housing providers to. Allow to use tiny homes as primary dwellings rather than just being allowed to use them as ADUs. Basically, in consistency with what was already in the zoning. I do want to be clear, this doesn't allow RVs, it doesn't allow tiny homes on wheels. You'd still need a full utility hookup with all of. Any tiny home you're going to put into the city, and it does need to be on a permanent foundation. We are still not allowing people to live in RVs in the city of Livingston. I know it does occur, but it's not allowed under the zoning. So this would allow tiny homes in R1, R2, R2MH, RMO, which is residential mobile home and highway commercial. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else for you unless you have questions for me.
Can you, two tiny homes on one? Property? Or is that like making the ADU? Yeah, go ahead.
If you're allowed two ADUs, so if you had two primary dwellings, you could have two accessory dwellings, both being tiny homes as ADUs, but you could. Never have a tiny home as the primary dwelling on the property. So it always has to be associated with. A primary dwelling, which is either has to be a manufactured home or a stick-built home. And the manufactured homes have to meet the HUD standards and have to be HUD certified.
Why? I mean, does it matter? Could, could you have a primary dwelling as a tiny home? Or is that just because of the way the HUD standards are written? That's just not an allowable. Primary. Dwelling.
If we want to allow it, or if you all want to allow it. Basically, the, it would just need a motion to strike that requirement from the zoning. I don't have any issue with. Tiny homes being used as primary dwellings, because they do have to meet building code, so they should be, they should be just as safe as a stick-built home. Really, the, the big distinction between that and the manufactured home is they can be a little bit smaller than three hundred and twenty square feet and they don't. Necessarily have to meet the HUD standards, they have to meet the IBC.
Okay, thanks.
Well, anyone else?
I have, yeah, I, this part really just has me spinning around. I've been trying to. Be succinct about this is not easy for me, right? I've been so confused and I've looked through HUD and everything else. Our, our zoning right now allows, and I think it's just. It's all, it's all words, but we gotta get them right, because. I just, I'm just afraid that of the unintended consequences. We're, we're interchanging some words and some terminology here, mobile home, manufactured home, modular home. We even bring RV into it once in a while. I think even in the definitions, there's a definition for, for a trailer home. Trailer or mobile home means factory-assembled structure equipped with the necessary services. Connections and constructed to be readily movable as a unit or units on its own chassis and designed to be used as a dwelling unit. That's in, that's in the zoning text. And, and they're being interchanged. And I think we have some work to do to kind of clean some of this stuff up. I just. R1, I don't want to have any conflict when we're in R1, for example, and someone drives up with a. Home on a, on a chassis, parks it, hooks it up to city services and says, this is okay, because zoning says so. You know what I mean?
So they're not being used interchangeably. There's three distinctions, basically. A mobile home is a. Home that's built before the HUD standards came into effect, which is nineteen seventies. Those are only allowed in R2MH, which is, the MH is mobile home, and RMO. A manufactured home has to be HUD certified, which means it has to be built after, I think it's nineteen seventy-three, and has to be certified. That would also cover modular homes, because any home built in a factory that's HUD certified. Is considered a manufactured home. So if it's put together in pieces on site. That's covered under the manufactured home. So those are two different things. Basically, one is HUD certified and one isn't, and it often has to do with the date they are built. A manufactured home is allowed in every residential zoning, basically any zoning district where a standard dwelling unit is allowed. A manufactured home is allowed. That does not apply to mobile homes, which are not HUD certified. So there is a distinction between those two things. So if someone wanted, were to. Apply for a building permit for a home built offsite in R1, for example. They would have to prove to us that they have HUD certification, which is basically a label on, on the building that it comes with. A tiny home is completely different. It doesn't have to have HUD certified. It just needs to meet that building code definition of being under. Four hundred square feet. So there are three different things. Modular homes, HUD doesn't really use that term, because. Manufactured home covers it. If you put your home together in pieces, all the pieces just have to have that HUD certification on them. As being a manufactured home, because it's manufactured in a factory, is basically how HUD defines it. So they are two different things. Sometimes it's, it's a tough distinction because of the certification, because basically. A mobile home and a manufactured home are only different really in that certification, which generally just has to do with your bills, but they are treated differently under the zoning and they are defined differently under the zone.
Yeah, once, once the structure lands on. A permanent foundation. So I, I, I deal a lot with, obviously, I deal a lot with. These kind of properties and lending has confused this, because they look at. They look at these properties that come in pre-built as one or two things. They look at them as modular or manufactured homes. The modular home is lifted off the trailer and set on a permanent foundation. Is considered stick-built in every way and it follows IBC. Manufactured homes come in on chassis, the chassis to some degree can be removed. The prop, the, the structure can be put on a foundation. And it's only when those things happen that a lender will say, okay, we've got a property that we can, that we can do lending on. So I look in to the HUD, I dug through as much as I could tolerate in HUD. And I, the definition that I kept coming, that I found and I came back to and I think it's the most updated one. Still goes on about. Well, I mean, it's built and remains on a permanent chassis. Management, destruction is transportable in one or more sections. It's, it is home eight feet or more in width, forty feet or more in length. The manufacturer home is designed and constructed to the federal manufacturing construction and safety standards, which HUD makes. And is also labeled. When erected on a site, the home is at least four hundred square feet, built and remains on a chassis. Designed to be used as a dwelling with a permanent foundation. Built to FHA criteria, so only designed, not required to be on a foundation.
This, our zoning does require it to be on a permanent foundation.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can see the distinction you're making, the modular homes that are. Considered stick-built by IBC. Our building department is also considering those.
Yeah, yeah, that, that part I'm not concerned about. I'm not questioning that part. It's the, it's where our zoning. Is written right now. That describes manufactured homes as mobile homes. And there is some sort of distinction going on there in our zoning worrying right now. That leads me to be concerned, concerned about unintended consequences. I'm not quite sure how to get my head straight on it. So kept telling me.
Is there, is there a way? Are there clear definitions in? I imagine there is. Could there be a table of what? X modular is, what manufactured is or isn't, and, you know, I don't know, is there a way that it could be? Described and explained, so it is a little more tight?
Yeah, so in, in our zoning right now, we have a definition for manufactured housing. It, it doesn't have a definition anywhere for modular housing. And I think what was, what, what happened is. It was so new, modular housing was so new that they just, they called it, in our zoning. Text. It was described or defined as manufactured housing, because the definition in our zoning means single-family dwelling built offsite in a factory after January one nineteen ninety. That is placed on a permanent foundation at least one thousand square feet in size. And I saw where we were looking, if I'm not mistaken, we're planning on striking that. Is that correct? So. Why don't we change, why don't we just change that word manufactured to modular housing, so we do have an inclusion of that? Of that. Structural type.
Those are two different things. So this definition of manufactured housing. Is basically a summary of the HUD definition of manufactured housing. And the mobile home is the same. So this is how HUD defines manufactured housing.
Okay.
Oh, my background on this is. And I worked. For three years over at the Weatherzation training center. I've been in and out of an awful lot of mobile homes. Underneath them and tore them apart and put them back together. The, the, the mobile home is the original concept that came out after the Second World War. Of a cheap, cheap home that could be pulled down the freeway and parked somewhere. It's no longer possible to build a mobile home. There's a bunch of them around in mobile homes.
It's no longer possible to build a mobile home. There's a bunch of them around in mobile home parks. They've typically got a, a main steel frame under them and may or may not have a double axle with wheels on them, and then they're skirted around the perimeter. And they've got the tongue on the front of them a lot of times, too. Those are relics. And I don't know if we even would need that terminology in the zoning ordinance, because you you can't, they're not made anymore and you can't build them anymore. And so it's, it, but we use that term mobile homes too often. We apply that term to mo, the modular homes or the manufactured homes, and we shouldn't do that, so I, possibly we should just strike that language about mobile homes from the ordinance, just to clarify in people's minds.
I think we need that language, because there are still people in Livingston that live in mobile homes. There are still mobile homes in the true definition of what a mobile home is. There are still mobile homes in Livingston. It is, the zoning is much more restrictive towards mobile homes, those being, you know, from the, the fifties to the early seventies and not HUD certified, is much more restrictive where you can put one of those in the city currently.
In terms of location, sure.
Yes, in terms of zoning.
I, I, I wonder about Michael's suggestion is that we clarify the distinction between manufactured housing and modular housing. My, you know, modules can be all kinds of things. They can, you can, you can order wall panels and roof panels and floor panels in chunks and pieces from a manufacturer, have them developed, delivered on a flatbed truck, and then have a crane kind of assemble the whole thing. That's a lot different than a manufactured home. So maybe we just need to kind of clarify the definition of what a modular home is.
I, I also found in, in HUD's jungle. In chapter ten, section one, title one, mortgage insurance, two, ten, one, general, HUD's terminology for mobile home has been changed to manufactured home, but does not include modular descrip, construction, which is also factory-built home, but is treated the same as a stick-built home, even though it too contains a manufacturer's label. So they're making, they're, they're trying to be somewhat clear about what mobile, manufactured and modular is in comparison to one another. They just do it all over the place in their little teeny pieces. Then further after that definition, back to that other section, it's, it's titled forty-one fifty dot two, change dash one. That's where I got the definition for manufactured home. You go down a page and a half, and, and it says, the manufactured home must not have been constructed before June fifteenth nineteen seventy-six. The unit must have been built to the manufactured housing construction safety standards as evidenced by having a small red metallic label. That's the HUD label. Any unit without this label is unacceptable. And that's, again, we're going into how lenders are to treat these structures.
So the zoning makes it very clear the distinction between manufactured housing and mobile homes. And it goes so far as to say a manufactured home does not include a mobile home, that distinction being that HUD certification. Maybe we need to add language to the zoning that states a, a many, just basically to that last sentence where it says a manufactured home does not include a mobile home. It could potentially say a manufactured home does not include a mobile home or a modular home, and then define modular home in s- some way similar to the way either the building code does, or define it as a structure being built offsites, meeting the international building code, something like that, and shall be treated as a stick-built building.
And always placed on a permanent foundation.
Yes, everything in the city has to be placed on a permanent foundation, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm all for that, too. Yep, I get that. Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, all right, so now. Sorry.
No, that's, I've been there. It hurt. Your brain hurts after a while.
Yeah, I've run around this one a few times already.
So just to clarify the sizing distinction here, HUD is saying their manufactured homes are a minimum of four hundred square feet and can be as large as people want. The definition of a tiny home is under three twenty? Three twenty?
Three twenty.
Three twenty is HUD and four hundred is tiny homes in IBC.
You're right, okay. And, and then ADUs are up to eight hundred square feet. So a tiny, tiny home, you could have an ADU that wasn't a tiny. But it would have to probably be stick-built on site.
It would either have to be stick-built or it would have to be HUD certified. You couldn't do a modular as an ADU. Or sorry, you couldn't do a, now I'm getting confused. You couldn't do a mobile home as an ADU. You could do a modular as an ADU, sorry. You couldn't do a mobile home as an ADU.
All right. And then the zoning classifications, again, I mean, they just, they they, they use that word mobile home in there, and is that, we're just, what we're saying there is that R2 MH zoning classification is just a relic. That's all we're saying there.
No, what we're saying is that manufactured homes are allowed in every district that allows single-family dwellings. That's in the zoning. What we're saying by R2 mobile home is that you could currently bring a mobile home, one that is not HUD certified, so a true mobile home, into that district and place a mobile home in that district, only in that district. Go ahead.
The mobile homes are built prior to nineteen seventy-six.
Ninety-seven, three?
Oh, that's what, no, that says seventy-six in here.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, basically, if you're in the standard R2 zone, you can put a manufactured home as your primary dwelling unit. You cannot put a mobile home. If you're in the R2 MH district, you can put a manufactured home or a mobile home. You can also obviously do a stick-built in both, or a modular, which is considered a stick-built in both.
Okay. And the likelihood of anyone moving a mobile home into these areas anyway, again, as Jim pointed out, and because of the age of these things, who's gonna do that anyway?
Yeah, and they're rapidly deteriorating. There's less and less true mobile homes around, just because they're, they're deteriorating over time and you can't build them anymore.
Correct, okay. Oh, well, I think I'm getting there.
We could do a great service to mankind by clarifying, somehow clarifying these, these categories.
I totally agree.
I like the timeline thing a lot, though. I really do. I mean, I just want to make sure that we're doing this, so, and I, and I saw where tiny homes had to be on a permanent foundation. I like that. That's, that's important, obviously. You know, we go, we also keep in mind that a, a, the standard city lot is thirty-five hundred square feet, which is twenty-five feet wide, allowing for setbacks in general. Your structure is only fifteen feet wide, which means it's just a bit under twenty-seven feet long, if you're four hundred square feet. So fifteen by twenty-seven is four hundred square feet roughly. On your typical, on, on your originally platted thirty-five hundred square foot lot. So that's, that almost screams tiny home anyway. But that would be a primary residence, so what do you do there?
Well, that was like my question earlier. Can we allow eight tiny homes to be primary residents? I'm curious if you all have thoughts on that.
I, I personally don't like the idea of telling a property owner that they can't. I don't like limiting things to nonprofits and governments to be allowed to. I mean, I understand it when we're talking about maybe a two-acre parcel. You know, we don't, we don't, we'd have to be careful on how that happens. But you don't have, I mean, they don't exist in the city very often, very, I mean, they're very, there's, you, you get over fourteen thousand square feet and they almost don't exist after that. They're, they're rare in residential zoning, so.
So what you're proposing, Michael, the jealous is, let's just say up in North Town or over on one of the new subdivisions, somebody could bring in a tiny home and just park it there and live in it. Put it on a foundation and just live in it. And it could be three hundred square feet. And the, and then all the neighbors around there who have spent three or four or five hundred thousand dollars on a, a nice great big house, all that's hidden right in the middle of that is this tiny little house. And that could potentially cause a bit of a stink. And if we set it up as you are, I'm not saying you're suggesting that, but you're, you're bringing it up as a question. If we would allow that to happen, then there would be really no recourse. Somebody could, and I've seen this happen, I'm sure you, you know, have too, where somebody's a bit strapped for cash, they have enough money to go buy a building lot somehow. Okay, how can we, what's the cheapest way to get into something we could live in? And it might be a tiny house in a subdivision. I could see, I could see.
But I don't even think it's necessarily a money thing. I think it's a choice of lifestyle, choosing to try to live economically sustainably. This is what you're interested in. You still want to have a little bit of land. You want to live in town and be able to walk and drive. Why must you have a certain square footage size to do that? I also don't quite understand why neighbors would care. It's not like they're being necessarily forced to buy those homes, although I know there's supply-demand issues there, but, I mean, I see it as a a way to give people that decision-making process, if there are empty lots. I mean, I don't think there's a ton of those, but I'm supportive of that. I think it should be. I'm thinking about doing it myself, so.
I, I think when you're, I think when you're in R1 zoning, you gotta, you gotta different, you got a different animal than you have in R2, first of all. I think in R1 zoning, you're, you're, you're usually dealing with a planned development subdivision kind of thing. There's gonna be covenants and HOAs that are gonna be restrictive all by themselves anyhow. I think in R2, it should, I, I, I have no reason, I can't think of one anyway, where, where an R2, as they exist today, we should not allow a tiny home be the primary dwelling, realizing, of course, that if you also want an ADU, you'd have to be smaller than your primary dwelling, because that's, that's defined in our ADU stuff. I, ma, maybe, maybe in R2, we can allow, but R1, we don't. I, I don't know, what do you, you know? As a possible solution.
Matthew, can you, I'm, I'm just drawing a blank here. So in a typical R2 lot, what's the smallest dwelling, primary dwelling, can you put on there?
If it is stick-built onsite, there is, the only minimum is the building code, so it's a couple hundred square feet. So right now, if you build onsite, you could absolutely put a tiny home on your property anywhere in the city. The only distinction is that being built offsite at this point.
Right, so your, your, your argument is that because it's built offsite, it can't be a primary resident. Even though it might be, might be of equal size.
I am happy for you all to change that standard if you want to. I took a pretty conservative approach with this, so if you all want to open it up, I, I don't, well, I can tell you the planning department is gonna have no problem with you doing that, and I will certainly be happy to recommend allowing eighty, or allowing tiny homes as primaries to the city commission. I have no issue with that at all.
So then, so then in R2 zone, you could, you could have a lot, you could put a tiny home on it. And then later, later on down the road, you could bring, bring another one in and, and put them together and have a duplex. You could do that. And then you could, then you could add two ADUs.
Okay. Which, it, it seems like that would meet some of the interests of the community in terms of density infill, depending on where that is. Yeah.
Well, I do, you know, we talk a lot about affordability, both in the housing plan and the growth policy. Tiny homes can be a boon for affordability, especially, as Jim just mentioned, if they're used as duplexes, potentially the most affordable housing in the city, though tiny homes on a per-square-foot basis are often the most expensive housing because they're so small. So two different ways to look at that, but they could provide a lot of affordable rentals, certainly.
I'm just looking down the, the road a bit. If, if a, a new developer came along and we had a provision where a tiny home could be a primary residence, would, I wonder if that would be a impetus for the developer to develop lots that are smaller?
Potentially, and you've seen, well, Bozeman has what's called a cottage village ordinance, allowing tiny homes as as primaries, basically allows for that development type, which is generally a bunch of tiny homes around some sort of communal green space in the middle. Basically, like a standard single-family development, but with tiny homes. Often, they're not creating lots. They're, they're either using, they're selling them as condos, they're in a community land trust, or they're all rentals.
Ooh, that's fascinating.
I, yeah, I think potentially Bozeman has approved one at this point, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
And so what are, is the zoning for that, is it R1, and then it's allowing that building type within it?
No, so basically, if you have enough lot area, so say you had a two-acre lot in R2 right now, you're allowed a certain number of dwelling units on that lot. Basically, one for thirty-five hundred square feet, so you know, if you had thirty-five thousand square feet, you could put ti, ten tiny homes on there, and you basically have what is often called a cottage village on that parcel.
Wow. I'm gonna do that.
Okay, let's not get sidetracked. We're dreaming here. All right, let's get back to it. Words on paper.
Oh, right, and, or one question about the new development stuff with the, with subdivisions, are those, is that different? For new development of people on the land, I don't know as much about the sub, I feel like I don't understand the subdivision, like, requirement stuff. Yeah, as much.
Yes, wouldn't affect subdivision really at all. When we do subdivision, we're just looking at the broad use, so it'd be considered as residential subdivision and then lots, so. Someone could subdivide their land and people could put tiny homes on each parcel, they could put tiny homes on each parcel. Most subdivisions have covenants now. A lot of subdivisions will covenant out tiny homes.
Okay. Would there be any problem for, like, looking forward if a developer bought that and then just made an entire community of tiny homes on, like, massive lots?
I like the idea of them, like, revitalizing old trailer home parks and turning those into tiny home. I, I, I think that's a great use for those, for those particular pieces of property, honestly. I mean, they're, they're more or less you know, it's just, it's just a different generation of them, almost, to that property.
And in terms of the giant lots question, unless it's gonna be developed for a whole bunch of units, the city generally doesn't allow, hasn't allowed people to subdivide it, big lots for single-family homes. That's not the development type that the city's been doing, and it's, this growth policy certainly is very, frowns upon that very heavily.
So is there anything in the current zoning ordinance that re-includes some building of three hundred fifty square foot primary residence on a R2 lot?
Not as long, as long as it meets building code, they can build as small as they want, as long as it's stick-built.
So far. Right, but we could change the stick-built clause in the manufactured piece?
So stick build is covered by IBC. There's, this wouldn't change any of that. It's just, it's, if it meets building code, it can be built in the city. We don't have any minimum size required. Uh, we don't have any minimum size requirements. For anything currently for anything but manufactured and mobile homes, which were consistent with the HUD. Uh, standards when when those size limits were adopted.
But we can change the requirement of the manufactured home piece, right?
Yeah, and that's being proposed in this zoning update to three hundred twenty square feet to be consistent with HUD. Uh, there's a lot, unfortunately, a lot of different square footages that are between HUD and I B C and and all of that.
Okay.
I lost track. What are we doing?
Yeah, I guess that's what we need to regroup here a little bit. Um, in terms of any questions about. About what we like and what we don't like. I think the consensus seems to be at this point that. We've removed the proposed provision to limit um any homes to being eighty use. And allow them to be primary residences. I I did not find Matthew in here any. Where does it? We've got the issue of the foundations and the utility hookups. Oh, and where I'm just in in sort of that's. That's kind of the question. And then there's, and then the the building codes. So you build a tiny home, it doesn't fall under the the HUD requirements. So somebody could build that to. Is that, does it have to be built to the? To the I B C?
Yes. Specifically, uh. Appendix Q of the I B C. So they'd be required to meet that. Basically, appendix Q says. There's some very small different standards for tiny homes. Otherwise, you have to meet the building code. Uh, so basically tiny homes have to meet the building code, other than there's some stuff about lots and kitchens.
And where does it say it has to be on a? On a foundation and be hooked up to permanent into utilities?
Here, give me one. So. If you look at section, it's proposed section thirty point five, six point two. Point C, it says all tiny homes must be placed on a permanent foundation. Uh, and then. I don't know if it specifically states utilities because that's in the city's utility ordinance. Uh, so basically that's what's required under the uh. Under the city code, uh, it's a different part of the city ordinance.
Okay, so as long as that's in there, I'm I'm good with it. Thank you.
So. Oh, can I ask a question about the square footage? So it's four hundred square feet?
So building code, the way the building code makes a distinction between a tiny home and a regular home. Is a tiny home is anything under four hundred square feet?
Oh, okay, but it doesn't have to be. It could be smaller.
It could be smaller. Yeah, the only limitation, there's some size limitations for rooms and building code, which is gonna. Put you in a certain range. It's probably a couple hundred square feet.
Okay, that's fine.
And so if we eliminate that provision for the A D U provision, does that mean that your? Your language in here about local governments or nonprofits uh doing developments, does that all go away too?
Yeah, because um manufactured, we basically allow manufactured homes everywhere and we'd allow tiny homes everywhere that it's not required anymore. Um, I think that was put in to allow what they're calling the Livingston. Cabin, Livingston cottages up on the hill by North Town. That provision was added to allow them to do manufactured homes under a thousand square feet. Because that's a non-issue, as long as they're over three hundred twenty square feet uh and HUD certified. It's probably not necessary anymore. Um. It could potentially be left in for manufactured homes under three hundred and twenty square feet, but then. They're not going to be HUD certified anyway, so they'd just be considered a tiny home if they're under four hundred square feet. So it's, I don't, I don't think it's necessary if they're allowed as primary dwellings.
On the A D U ordinance, what's the percent? Is there like a percentage of how much smaller the? An A D U has to be. So if if we were allowing the primary dwelling unit to be a tiny house. Is there a way to allow there to be two tiny homes of the same size on there?
None of the same size, but one would have to be one square foot smaller.
Okay, okay.
Well, that, but that that doesn't allow for an over under, right? Because if you're over and you're exactly inside the same footprint, you can be equivalent. So I'm thinking that.
Like you can be considered an A D U under the definition of A, the definition of A D U states that the A D U is smaller than the primary.
Unless it's an attached A D U.
Unless it's attached, correct.
Right, so the basement, for exactly, for for example, can be the same size. So if you build a tiny home. With a basement that's the same size. Then it could be the same size. Yeah, there you go. Okay.
Matthew, do you have a list of things that we've like decided that we may?
I have two things on my list, and it's really three. Um. Basically have. Putting in a new definition of modular home that. Uh, distinguishes it from manufactured home in that it's treated as a stick built and has to meet the I B C. And then uh not limiting the tiny homes to uh A D U's. And then the third one is because of that, uh, the exemption for governments and nonprofits is unnecessary.
Okay. That seems clear, clear enough. What'd you like? Are you still confused?
I'm get, I'm getting over it.
Okay. I think we. I I feel like we've reached the table point here. I would suggest. We have a motion from the floor to. Adapt these changes for tiny homes. With the three changes that Matthew just mentioned. Uh, so is there somebody that would do that, please?
Didn't get it all written down perfectly there, Matthew, but I think we want a motion to update the definition of modular home. And add in, we don't want to limit tiny homes to A D U's, and we want to remove the exemption for government and nonprofits.
The only change is uh rather than update the definition for modular, we don't have one, so add a definition for modular. Uh, and potentially uh update the definition for manufactured, just to uh make sure that it says it's not a module.
That, that is what I motion. Great.
Well, second. And then, um. In terms of discussion, I thought, I'm a little confused about what a definition of modular is. Do you have a definition, Matthew? I mean, I I I've seen piecemeal houses. Um, put together and, you know, wall sections and Scott plywood on the outside and they're just kind of wall sections that get. Popped into place or except panel houses, if you're familiar with that, they're insulated panels with. Westby on both sides, that would probably be considered a a modular type house.
Uh, the best definition I have here is modular homes that are made in a factory as sections. They're usually transported in factory-built sections that are put together at sites. Uh, and are treated no different than site-built homes. Uh, and then they have to be in compliance with the I B C. So something along those lines. I'll look at the I B C as well or. Have Jim look at the I B C and see if they have a definition specifically for modular homes. I don't know how aware you are of the Spanish Peaks development down in Big Sky, but they're. Multi-million dollar homes and those are all modular homes. They just come in sections of fancy house and they put them together. A lot of places are doing that now. It's pretty common, so I think it's a good distinction to make.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor of the proposed changes to the ordinance, uh, say aye.
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 Wendy.
I, I.
Thank you. That passed and then, thank you very much. Okay. Now we are on to. A discussion of proposed changes to the building design standards in the ordinance.
We have eight minutes. Are we gonna do that?
We're not gonna get very far, but so I think we just need to kind of strategize a bit about where we're going with this. Uh, we've skirted around the edges of the building design standards at time or two already, so. Barring any. Future zone map amendments coming out from Matthew, let's put that at the top of the list for next week. And. Let me bring this up again to at our last meeting, we had a discussion and. About us doing our homework. To create either a short list of what you would like a large scale rig, retail regulation or design standards to achieve. And I don't know, this is an email from Matthew on May twelfth. You might look that up again. Uh, so I I think we're trying to, you know, get. More work done at our meetings by having us do some homework prior to that, so. The design standards is a tough one. Maybe we'll send this around again too, and we could, we can. Prepare it for the next meeting. And the last thing I can think of is a discussion, we had a discussion about this already. About a meeting in the future in person as opposed to meeting over Zoom. And I know one of us is, I think, still not vaccinated. But I don't know, Matthew, do you know what other committees are doing in the city?
I know the city commission is going back. I think it's the first meeting in July in person. Um, there's. Been discussion of if somehow they can do a hybrid meeting of both. I'm not sure. If that's possible right now. So some boards are going back, some aren't. Um, it's sort of an ongoing discussion with all the boards. Uh, historic preservation has been meeting in person pretty much the whole time. So it just depends. I am out of state for the July meeting, so I actually prefer that July is. Not in person, but if you all want to have it in person, we can figure that out. I can figure out how to call in as well.
Okay. Um, I think from the health standpoint, I, Laurel's the health officer here. She would say, uh, for those who are vaccinated, you're a hundred percent safe to. Meet in public, and if there's only one person in the room who isn't vaccinated, then. Then you would be safe too. The the question would be if we get some of the public showing up at the meeting. And whether or not they are vaccinated or not, so, um, and we could certainly. You know, we could set up the environment such that the environment would save with plenty of ventilation and heating. It might be a workable solution too, but let's. I, let's just leave it as a Zoom meeting for next month, just uh if you're gonna be out of town, Matthew. And let this evolve a little more before we go back to in-person meetings.
Yeah, and just, just a heads up too, I will not be at that meeting. In July, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Is everyone else gonna be there just to make sure we're actually gonna have a quorum for that?
I will be there.
Matthew, my.
Literally.
Over Zoom, I should be able to attend.
When is it? It's July seventh?
Six.
Six. Yes.
July thirteenth.
Just kidding, July thirteenth.
July thirteenth is the second Tuesday.
Right.
Right, right, second.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine for me.
Let's plan on that then. Any further? Business that we need to put on our plate for next month? Anyone can think of?
No.
Okay. Um, Matthew, anything else?
No, I uh have nothing for you for next month, so hopefully we can just talk about the building design standards unless someone applies for something. Uh, I will give you just a quick update. Um, just, we had a store preservation meeting earlier and the limitations on wall signs downtown is becoming a huge problem. Uh, so they may actually submit a letter to you all asking us to. Update the downtown sign regulations, uh, basically giving them discretion on approving signs in my start district.
Okay. All right. Good. Well, if there's no further discussion points, um, I will call this meeting. And, um, thank you very much and. Maybe we'll see you downtown sometime. Thanks a lot, guys.
Good night.
Thank you.